I'm the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Yes.
Here.
Approval of the agenda.
I'd like to make a, bring up that still on this, the agenda, the employee handbook and the town, usage of town vehicles still not on this. Been a request every month since April.
You have to have a work session for the handbook I already spoke about.
And that's what I'm told every month, so why don't we have it?
Because you said you won't have a work session with me.
Okay, well, we ain't gonna argue, so basically we'll set up a work session. So what's good for everybody?
This is the agenda. They can work this out later.
Okay, so I need approval on the agenda.
I'm sorry, can you guys speak up a little bit?
Yeah, here you are.
Can you hear me now?
I just made a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Mayor Proctor?
Yes.
Mr. Piano?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Yes. Approval of regular meeting minutes for September eighth, twenty twenty-two.
I move that we approve the minutes for September eighth, two thousand twenty-two meeting.
All struck in it.
Mayor Proctor?
Yes.
Mr. Piano?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, Robert, I'm like. What's going on, Mr. Robert?
I would just like to, um, let everybody know that might not know, you know, I've been here a long time, that, um, even though Donald is our elected official as a mayor, he has a limited ability and can't read or write.
Well, yeah, do you have proof of that?
This paper that's there.
What I need to give. Keep talking, you're doing good.
All right. If you read it from the front to the, from the top to the bottom, I will apologize for my misunderstanding and, um, this will be ended. Since you, you know, you can't read or write, there's, however, there's forty-three situations that, uh, grant money won't be given to us until all those are gone through approvals.
Mm-hmm.
How are you gonna do that?
To the board?
Well, you can't even read what the paperwork says. How are you gonna understand what it says to sign any of the paperwork?
Really? And again, where'd you get your education?
I had known that for a long time.
Oh, have you?
Yes.
Well, I think they say you're gonna argue with you, so what's your point?
Mr. Mayor, can I, can I just have a minute?
Go ahead.
He's attacking, uh, a mayor or whatever else with no, basically attorney or nothing with him. So I think this is immaterial. We just move on to our reports.
Now, I would think that, you know, what, the man's got a right to speak and there is, I've heard the same rumors.
Well, that's good for you.
And there's video of you not being able to read a paragraph.
Multiple.
Multiple videos of you not being able to read a paragraph. My point is a five-point-eight million dollar loan and you're the signature on this of loan and slash grant, and I'd like to personally know that you are capable of understanding what you're signing.
Sure.
Comprehensible.
Again. Anything else?
He don't comprehend, little girl. Look at his attitude. He can't read or write. Look at this guy.
Really? Okay, can you do it? Yeah, all right.
No, I have, I have, um, I'm, right now I'm disabled. I do dialysis treatments three times a week and I have lung cancer. So I do not have the energy or the time to do that, or I would probably put my name in, in February.
You could have been more happy to grab an application, buddy.
So I know my limitations, but I can't do that.
Okay, and? Have a good day, buddy. Have a good day.
That's rude.
We're done.
Yeah, rude.
No more rude than you are most of the time.
Okay, we ain't gonna argue, folks. Robert, thank you for coming up.
Thank you, Robert.
They care about their citizens in their opinion, you gotta see that, right?
And this is the.
First time I seen him.
And the mayor just interrupting the whole time.
First time I ever seen it, Robert.
Can't read.
That's right there, so that's right there.
He can't read, I was just gonna see it.
Thanks.
It's gonna be a fun one.
Okay, reports, building inspector. All right, this is go to utility report right now. So how's everything going with the water caps and the water leaks? Why, I saw you working on one. You have a couple, or?
Yeah, I had that one on Saturday.
Major or just major? Over, over those, huh?
I worked seven days a week.
Steven, can you speak up? I can't even hear you. No, not, uh, I can't.
I got called out at five-thirty at one in the afternoon on Saturday. I worked on it till eight-thirty at night and had to talk to them. I couldn't do anything else, so I started again on Saturday morning when you were done, and I repaired it like well.
Were the ones on main lines, or?
No, the service line or house that, since it was present in the name too, that's the panel we're supposed to work.
Anything else? How's the, how's our water, water situation up on top? How's the?
I'm holding steady in the river. We're just right above the bike. I should not do that. I'm operating on wells, operating four, twenty-four, seven.
And what about the concrete? The concrete? Did you have, did you say something about the concrete on, on our, uh, water storage up there?
Oh, yeah, the river. On the light, didn't get bid on it, didn't replace it.
Can you tell everybody what's going on with that?
Well, years ago, before I ever got here, there was an attack in several places, and all those were going on the patches and in good shape. Nothing even getting in at the top. I, last night I caddled in one of those patches and took the going off. And the concrete under there is crumbling, pretty much all went through the.
Oh, how big of a river?
That slide I dug up is probably about three foot long, but there's patches up there that are even bigger than that. And I can just guess the storm was that concrete in there. The concrete's almost like two and a half inches thick on that roof. And I'm just afraid over time it's just gonna start caving in.
What, what, what are they using up there? What kind of asphalt, Virgil?
White, I don't know what it is, kind of rubbery stuff.
So you're saying that concrete's falling inside?
Not yet. At this point, we can get a heavy snow on there and just follow the.
Is that, is that the whole, the whole top, Virgil? Or just?
Just one of the patches.
So you said we have how many patches up there?
I don't know. There's probably ten patches up here.
Is it your recommendation to get a bid on replacing?
And don't go back to the pipe.
A pitch to let the water rain out?
Pitch to not come.
So how high, how high would it have to be?
The tighter it is right now, the slantier, when you put snow off, keep the water going down, put more ants on it too. If you hear that right now, then only two ants up there.
The.
You start to make air in there, it's gonna be dry. That's one of the problems, it's so moist in there. It's just beating away at it.
What is the, the board still about getting bid on? I mean, we're gonna have to do it.
Yeah, I think, you know, we should get bids from somebody that knows, you know, what they're looking at and, and share what this, you know, they think should be done with it.
Because how, how big is that, that roof?
What is the dimension? Do you know, Virgil?
No, it's not many. Uh, seventy feet by forty feet, you know, about the S. I have a Saturday afternoon schedule tomorrow.
Okay.
I have one every three days. She'll be looking at it tomorrow. In two thousand nineteen, she recommended the entire river will be replaced. She'll be looking at that one tomorrow and do it more, one thing at a time.
Yeah, if you can do that, then, then we can get it out.
But she's not gonna be able to do it.
Well, if it's gonna cave in, I.
How do you wanna get out there?
Yeah.
You know, you can walk on some, like, certain spots that are clear, but there's some spots that you can't walk.
Thank you, I appreciate you being here. Put a, like, an atrium deal over this boss. You think, you think that's gonna save it?
Can you hear these roof moths?
Yeah, just the roof.
Good, if I understood what you're saying, like, you're talking about a secondary structure, a roof over it to save what's there, and he's requesting be replaced.
Exactly.
That's what he guessed at yesterday. He's talking about secondary, on top of those.
No. Well, that's, that's why I'm asking, if, if, you know, it would work, because if not, it doesn't work.
And I was just trying to clarify, because I was seeing a picture of something else.
Okay, well, get, get us that report tomorrow. Yeah, that will.
You don't have it ready until Monday.
Oh, no, probably.
Well, hopefully by the next meeting. So if we can get that, then we can get that thing up with bears, because.
I've already contacted one guy, and he just hasn't heard back from him, because I know.
Well, the thing is, that's, that's our, all our inky water and everything in there too, so, okay.
How are you holding up, Virgil? There's a lot of workload that I was reading here. Has there been any applications or anything submitted yet? One so far? Can we consider giving the man a bonus or a raise or something for his extra dedication?
I second. Well, he gets, he gets overtime for calling, right?
Well, yeah, but there's, you know, I'm just saying, can we consider a special consideration for the extra workload?
That's, that's up to you, board member.
So how do we do a work session? Uh, we discuss it here?
We can do it right now, we can discuss it. It's up to the board.
Let's just kinda run through here, just saying, let's see what Virgil's gonna have to do over here. Let's, uh, let's put this up.
I didn't hear you mark him.
Let's just kinda take it from right now, so we can all, let's go back and make it back to right here.
I bet he'd like to know that we appreciate what he's doing.
Yeah.
Multiple people's jobs. Man doesn't want it.
What?
He was saying that he thinks that, you know, we appreciate you.
You know, and beyond that, Virgil, you'll be taking care of.
Anything else from Virgil?
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Virgil.
Let's see, office report, we should have.
So again, two guys in work, right? They fired a gas guy, so they got him doing the gas.
No office report.
And they only wanted to pay him seventeen dollars.
So we'll move on to old business. Margarita on sewer and water cap, three hundred south Francisco.
Thirty-three dollars an hour and up here.
She there?
He does it for his people.
Pretty much. Well, it's up to the board, if you, if you want to grant this sewer and water cap, but we have to lift the motorium.
Nothing's changing to it, no.
What's that? On Francisco, right there, where you go behind the housing and you got that camper trailer right there, right there?
I'm saying, I'm saying, you know, that has been built.
Yeah, they just, they just wait for us to approve them. We have their drawing and everything here on it. So, since you did talk to Adam, and Adam didn't say, yeah, it was, it was fine, so, go.
Do we install them before they detach or do we wait on that?
How do you guys use it, Virgil?
Appreciate you.
I never did, did that before. We're strictly the favorite in that, I can't.
Because I know they're supposed to be putting in a. Well, let's see. Oh, I have a drawing of that.
They putting in a mobile or do they take this modular?
I think it was a modular, if I remember right.
Twenty-four by sixty?
It might be, or, I don't know, sure.
So if you do the last module, we're down there behind them.
What do we do for back material, bringing in a, a house?
Well, that's what I'm saying, okay, bringing in a house, what are they doing?
They're supposed to be bringing in, and I'm looking for the drawing, I got the one for Maple. I'm looking for the drawing on hers. I'm just looking at.
This is for pictures, because he can't read. Gotta draw him a picture.
Right.
Twenty-four by six?
That's the mayor.
I will take our.
Can't read a paragraph.
Cable this for right now, make a motion at that point.
Second on that? Sorry, I didn't understand what you're saying.
I don't know, I'm just gonna cable it for right now until I come up with some true plans for it.
Mayor Proctor?
Yes.
Mr. Piano?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Okay, so election date for January tenth, twenty twenty-three.
I believe that was already, um, done with. I feel a little bit of resistance to my part in today's meetings.
So according to poll vote, it's all yes.
That's just to hold a special election, right? And that was just the only question on it?
I should have a good new package.
It wasn't in the packet, it was here on the table. I just.
Also, for his package.
Yeah, great, yeah.
Yeah, I got that.
Okay.
And if anybody would like to know the dates that are due during the election time, it'll be out on the website. For what days you can pick up your packages, when they need to be turned in, and when they need to be notified, so that information will be out there. And if you don't have a computer, you know, leave some out of those packages, you guys are gonna pick them up there as well.
Don't hold it. So, word, fine, what's that?
Yes. I would like to say that I'm only hearing, like, every other word people are saying.
Okay, here's for ADA ramp for town hall entrance. Uh, Ken, Ken Apple is the one that put in his bid.
Did we run an ad for this job?
What's that?
Did we run an ad in the paper for this contract?
Yes.
We've been doing it for over eight months, uh, Vir, and let, let me just explain some things. Um, we tried to get bids. I had somebody from Arizona call me. They wanted seventy-five thousand dollars. And then somebody in California called me. We did it on the national, uh, bid thing. Somebody from California called me. They wanted over ninety thousand. They wanted, like, five nights for the rooms. Uh, at their convenience, when the rooms were gonna be available, when, because they had jobs they set up in Springs, and they'd send a crew down periodically. And, uh, it was all kinds of stuff. There was all kinds of things they told me with going. I said, guys, we're not this kind of a community. I said, we're a little town here. Oh, okay, so they just hung up on me, so that was basically that. Uh, we've been running this thing. We tried to get Tony third diesel to do a metal one. And Tony's just so damn busy, and I finally, uh, Ken Apple finally come about, and that's the bid he gave us.
And I know this guy's work. I've heard that he does excellent work. I have no complaint with him whatsoever. Uh, is there a blueprint or something actually showing what we're going to get? Because this doesn't really explain a lot. It's labor and material for one ADA ramp, forty foot long.
Vir, we, I didn't bring that in because we pretty much took things off with the city of Kirdan and city of Waltonburg Cat, and they did mental stuff. But the city of Waltonburg, or the city of Kirdan, excuse me, had the ones on the back of, uh, the old jail that they did, and that's kind of what we looked at. But, you know, I thought, uh, Ken had all the stuff from ADA that they put out, and that's basically what we base this bid on, so that's all I can say.
So there is no blueprint or design we can actually?
We need to, I mean, we're trying to build a damn handicap rap. We're not trying to make this project so damn high that, no, we can't afford it. You know, we can't start getting structural engineers and all that other stuff.
No, I, you're taking this wrong. I'm asking because if I want to have a house built, I would at least have a drawing like this saying what the floor plan is.
Well, we can get that with, uh, I'm sure Ken can give you that. I'm not sure. I need to ask him.
And it says ADA ramp, which means ADA compliant.
Yeah.
And so that means we're actually gonna change the entrance to the town hall?
Well, not necessarily. We're gonna come off the side where the water deal is.
Right.
And come all the way up and then go across, and, you know, the entrance will go in, but the stairs will disappear. They're gonna go in there, and your stairs now, for people who walk in on stairs, will be on the west side towards the shop.
Okay, but we'll all actually be using the same door to enter next?
That's the new door that fits the criteria.
And the other thing that's not part of this, there's no railings on this, because, uh, when I talked to Tony down there at Toe Park, he says, oh, I can't give you a bid on railing, because I don't know what, you know, if you're two inches or three inches off, Tony says, I just can't go and bid, uh, except if I'm gonna hit that. He said, so, uh, that would be another bid we'll have, and then, uh, we're gonna have to put in another magic door in the town hall.
Okay, so this is a partial bid?
Yeah, just to get a ramp up there and get them in the door.
I do have some information that require, uh, dimensions that I can announce to you if you'd like.
I would like to look at it, yes.
I really feel like, before anything is done, Mark, we should see a blueprint.
Okay, that's fine, I understand. You know, I, I think Ken got it all, but I didn't.
You were with anything.
I respect this guy's work. I tell us, he's got a good reputation.
I don't think Ken has a problem with that either, but they're getting asking, you know, when he dropped the bid off, uh.
Hold table this until next meeting, then?
Yeah, that works.
Appreciate you asking, thank you.
Okay, new business, new code problem. They're not here to go again, folks. Purchasing options. So basically, it's, it's for codes that we have, uh, like in our code book and stuff like that. That's what this is, this is what this is purchasing of it. And you should have, if I'm correct, it was a price list?
These are emails from Sarah?
No, this, this would be the, like, the code book?
That's from Sarah, well, that's about the codes, about the code book.
Okay.
Basically, I guess I'm the only one around this, but you're, uh, anytime we go in and redo the code books, what we call reclassification, they come back in, they look at our codes, and, uh, they give us kind of a price of what we need to do on bringing them up to date, I guess, is the best thing I can say.
Well, it's like, it's like the state books and the, that, that you get. Every year they're, they're updated. So basically, that's what, what we need on this, is to update our, our mini code.
And they keep us in standards with the bids of state and local. Did they give us an actual price, what they thought they might need to do, or, or whatever this public calendar, but I didn't bear with it.
Are these, are these good for how many years?
The qualifications should be done, uh, they can, they can be freed up right here. It's a lot more than twelve ordinances we should probably have to do less than a year.
What's he saying?
We asked if, uh, the, they have to be updated every year, the code books, and they said, yes, maybe have an over amount of ordinances to put in there. It should be done that year, so you're not having to do any bunch at one time.
So they're talking eighty-nine fifty for the process? And the rest of the sub cases, they come about thirteen hundred standard? What was the last hundred? Uh, when we get it, it was more, it was more than this.
I took that in the form.
Yeah, there was a couple more minutes, I remember when they get it. I was a little bit bored then, but, uh. We got one, we got one person on, uh. Was that better type? I'll be playing with that.
Well, that's been a while, five. Well, it's up to the board.
This isn't a new contract, is it? Did we use these people already?
It's a two book that, that we go by the municipal codes, and that's the book we're updating.
I understand we're updating that book, but this company is centering the information. This is a existing vendor?
Everybody uses, and we're gonna stop it.
So if there's some changes to be made, they suggest what needs to be?
No, we send in the ordinances that I think who that are in the book that need to be updated for being made new.
Oh, wow, okay.
And then we have a fee for every time we update something. There's a standard fee, and then there's, uh, services plus for monthly updates. There's. There's a standard fee and then there's, uh, services plus for monthly updates. There's a discount if we pay it all at once, it looks like. Honestly, I don't know pricing on anything like this, so. I, I wouldn't know if that's a good price or not. So that'd be, does anyone else?
I never got one. Yeah, it's appreciated.
Last time I had it then was two thousand twelve, and then before that, they had it in two thousand and five.
So we've been, they've been carrying this along.
So they're getting it up to the town council. We want to do it, but we're gonna need to get it updated.
Yeah, I think we need to go with their full contract. I think we need to have a publisher, so can we get her? That kind of stuff.
Can we add this to the workshop so we can sit there and discuss this and?
We'll go to the workshop.
Can we, can we combine some of these things all to one workshop instead of splitting this up like? Okay, yeah. If we could add this to it, I think we'd have a better understanding.
We need a date for the workshop.
And I'm available whenever.
It probably can't be.
About next Thursday.
Round one time.
Six, as usual.
That works very well.
Yes.
Yeah, you're awesome. Thanks.
Second.
That's second word?
Yes.
Mayor Proctor?
Yes.
Mr. Piano?
Yes.
Mr. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Born?
Yeah. Okay, water sort out for Richard Sanchez. And it has to be determined. And I think you have a drawing of that. Next one will go on Maple, correct?
Yeah, I believe it's those lots up there. These are the building.
This is the old gas station up there.
Where's the dump?
It was down on the stove.
On Maple, right?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Mind your, mind your gas, please.
West of Bill, excuse me, and, uh, a little bit north, yeah. Yeah, north of the dads.
And he's gonna put a modular home there. Has he talked to the building contractor about this? Not yet.
No, that's another one. I think, you know, there's still some, another person up there that understands, maybe doing something, so I don't know. He come and talk to me about it. And I said, well, can you give me some concrete, you have the sense of your information to give to the town? I can't tell you anything either. I said, besides, I'm not the guy. He's gonna go talk to them.
Yeah, because this, this is showing five lots, one soul, so. He's got four lots.
And these are both marked plot one. And the house is splitting on.
I mean, I don't have.
A lot going into.
Like he's doing it, but, uh, he's, the information system is lacking.
Five. That's what this is showing, five lots.
Would you like to see this?
So four one do, table this one, so next one two.
So we're gonna be waiting for more information from Mr. Sanchez?
Mm-hmm. Again, talk to the board. Want to tell you what's next or what do you want to do?
I didn't hear that last thing.
What do you want to do? Table it for next meeting until we get further plans on that?
I assume we, the only thing we can do. Yes.
Your table. Hey. Processing for adoption of ordinances.
Now, thi- this, I thought we're gonna go into, uh, put this in the workshop also.
What's that?
This is the whole thing about deordinances, how they originate, if they're resolution, how do they come to the public? How do they come to us for discussion and how they get passed, right?
Uh, I think you're, you're, you're right, Vern. I think that's more of a workshop thing than a meeting thing.
Make up a workshop.
It does, uh, all together there.
Okay. Last one that we have is approval of the bill.
Have a little question. I saw a proof.
Second.
Mayor Proctor? Mr. Piano?
Yes.
Mr. Born?
Yes.
Yeah.
Just before we do it, Gerald. Vern, there's a lot of stuff I know you're confused about and stuff, but we have a lot of people, you know, CML can come down here and do a workshop. We got a lot of people that come down here and help us out, do what we need to do. They can do it individually or they go to a board. So we have a lot of questions, you know, call one of the girls in the office to see if they, you know, they can set a workshop up and down there. You're right, a lot of the stuff, I know you don't understand it or it's kind of cloudy.
Well, and I'm not the only one that didn't understand it, but we did set up the workshop just now for next Thursday at six, right?
Yeah. But I'm, but I'm talking about anything. With anything else you have, like budgets and stuff, if we're gonna be coming up with things, all that stuff, you probably want to get into one of these workshops that, uh, CML goes out, they do a Kirkland, Walthamburg, whatever they do. Might have to go there with, uh.
Well, and that rolls over into the, we're done with this, right? We're to.
We're done with our meeting.
I, I'd, I'd like to ask a question about the interim loan ordinance that we passed last week. It doesn't appear like, I was under the impression when we left here that there was changes going to be made on it. But it doesn't appear like the changes were made. We voted and it looks like it passed the way that it was given to us originally. So what do we do with that?
Yeah, we just.
So, but we voted to pass the ordinance and we all sat here in front of everyone and on camera saying Gerald would be assigned. The board would give monthly updates on everything to do with the water project. Uh, there's something else that was to that. But it appears like when we voted yes, I was under the impression we were voting yes with those changes. Yet we accepted it and published it in the original form without the changes put on it.
Was that motion in the meeting?
Excuse me?
Was a motion in the meeting to do it that way?
Oh.
And I understand, I understand. Yeah, we just got tricked.
No, I, I seen it. I wasn't here.
But we're getting out of.
And I apologize. Yes, ma'am, you were not here.
We're getting out of our agenda because we already passed that stuff, but, I mean.
Well, but, but we're not. We're at the closing of the meetings whenever I get to bring up things, right?
No, we're, we're past our agenda. Well, we're already done.
Well, but we were tricked into passing.
No, we weren't tricked into anything. All we needed to do is get that done so we could get this, this project.
To bum rush it through and the changes that we sat here and discussed with the attorney that were agreed to were not made. And I'm not gonna argue it all night. I'm just wanting to make that point that it didn't happen properly, in my opinion.
We approved what we needed to approve to get this project to move.
Exactly. And that's what makes this a dictatorship. You did not pass what the discussion was on the changes. We sat here and agreed.
I made the motion on the ordinance period. That's what we, that's what we did.
Mark.
I don't understand what you're saying.
Before, before it was passed, he, he made some changes and the attorney agreed to it.
Mm-hmm.
Was there a motion on the board to?
See, that's where the trick comes in. That's where the tyranny comes in. That's where the dictatorship is. How can you look at it any other way? It doesn't matter what's put on the table in front of us. We vote in good faith that this is what's.
But I made the motion to do whatever we had to do.
Mark, there was a motion and the attorney agreed to make the changes. And he spoke with Mr. Uh, Mr. Born and told him the changes would be made.
That's exactly what happened, but the changes didn't get made. I know we're stuck into it. But I'm trying to bring up that this is the kind of service the people get from the council. It doesn't matter what you said here and discussed. It doesn't matter what you voted on. Whoever put together, the bond cap council got the information, the ordinance came to us, there was changes to be made. But everyone so hurried, much of a hurry to bum rush this thing through, none of the changes were made. That's not fair to the council. That's not fair to the people.
I apologize, because I haven't seen the final, I haven't seen the final one.
It's been published.
I haven't seen it.
Okay, workshop.
Workshop.
Yeah.
It was published last week? Go ahead.
I was here that night, and when the motion was made, it was made to approve the ordinance. You guys, and went back and was asked, the motion was made second. If the motion was not changed to, I motion to approve the ordinance with the changes that Mr. Born discussed.
Tricky, tricky, guys.
Yeah, we got tricked into it though, and that's all it was because everyone. This board hardly ever follows a proper procedures for anything. My understanding, whenever I took that vote, and I'm not going to contest this because we go through this interim loan into a mess. I'm bringing up the fact that that's why people think this is a dictatorship. Doesn't matter what we vote. Doesn't matter what we say, doesn't matter what we think. It's going to be done the way a small group of things at once. I thought, I honestly thought there's video of this. I thought that was what was going on.
Wait, to move your jurisdiction, Vern?
Right in the middle of a conversation?
He's gonna interrupt him to make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Why you wouldn't bother? Second. All proof. I mean, and it's six forty-five.
At least maybe three hours.